I appreciate that. Alrighty, I'm gonna call our meeting to order and ask that everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. We, if you need a listening device, Craig here can help you. If you, we have all our, um, meeting documents over on the end by Commissioner Heiburger. Uh, if you have a cellphone, they have in silence, now would be a good time to do that. And, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Approve the agenda.
Motion by Heiburger, second by Benega. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Did I miss one?
That was Barth's.
No, Barth's, okay, well then we know who did it. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries, our agenda is approved. Um, look for a motion to approve our commission meeting minutes for May 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second by the two gentlemen on the end, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of six million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents.
Hey, the bills.
Second.
Motion is second, comments. Alrighty, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, bills are paid. Um, we have reports, numerous reports from the sheriff's office, a coroner report, public defender's annual report, exciting reading, I've read it, it's good. Um, the monthly construction projects, our link annual report, we had our link ribbon cutting last night, um, days away from opening the doors, um, great report there also, and then our auditors, financial reports, and I think Ben's here to speak on our financial reports. Auditor Kite, good morning.
Good morning, yes. And Kite, auditor's office. Um, hopefully my financial reports are as exciting as the others.
[laughing]
Wanted, uh, just gotta point out a few items here. Um, you know, on our general fund balance, it's currently sitting at forty-two point eight million dollars. Um, item to note there of, that about, over thirteen million of that is, uh, result of the, of CRF funds, um, so it's kinda inflating that, and we've also seen the, uh, our general fund balance grow a little bit, um, since the first year, about six million from some other items. Um, and then I'd move on to the, uh, highway fund, that balance is around six million dollars, we're starting to, or the, uh, they're trying to rebuild that up to some, uh, previous year levels, but I guess as we get into the construction season, we'll start to see that also move down before too long. Um, go with the revenue items. So our year-to-date revenue, we are trending at about four percent higher than prior year, uh, we're at about twenty-seven million dollars in collections, property taxes are, are also about, uh, about five percent higher than, uh, last year. If there's a, an explanation for that, I mean, it's really good news, um, I, I would just say that there's a lot of liquidity out there in, in, in the economy, not only in, you know, from US government or business, but I think individuals, all that money just kinda flows into our pockets, and, uh, when you have more money in your, your checking account, so to speak, um, I think you just pay your bills a little bit faster as well, so I think that's reflected in our collections and our, in our, um, property taxes, that would be my explanation there, otherwise, um, the other, uh, revenues are about on track from prior years. Uh, if I looked at our year-to-date expenditures, um, we're, we're trending very well to last year, if I, uh, kinda call out the year-to-date personnel expenses, uh, you can see that we are favorable by about almost three percent compared to last year, and that's due to one more pay period in twenty-twenty versus twenty-twenty-one, so I, I think we all see that favorableness continue until about July, before it starts to catch up from, from last year. And, that's all the comments I wanted to make on the financial reports. Any questions?
Just one, if I may. Uh, with the property tax collections, is there a way for us to identify if some of those property taxes were collected from prior years that hadn't been paid, that people now are frankly catching up with their liquidity issues?
Um, there is, I think, what, the numbers you're seeing there though are for, um, as far as I know, for this year, right? Yeah, that, we, we probably, we do track, um, those delinquent taxes that are being caught up.
That's kinda what I was looking for, if there was an opportunity to give us that dollar amount, what those delinquent catch-ups were.
Uh, I can look into that and see if I can provide you that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Alrighty. Personnel actions, I'd look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries, and speaking of carrying, no report from Kerry today, so we will go into, um, abatements recommended for approval, it's spring, so we usually get a few more of these, and we're gonna take them in groups, um, A1 and A2 will be our first one.
Yep, Chris Lilly equalization, first one is, uh, parcel eight-seven-one-six-three for Leo Faulkner, twenty-nineteen property taxing amount of a hundred and five dollars and thirty cents, uh, same parcel, twenty-twenty property taxes in the amount of a hundred and three dollars and fourteen cents. This one here is a mobile home that moved out of county and was being taxed in another county, and we were just finally made aware of it, so, wasn't here to be taxed, and since it was already, we have verified it was taxed in Moody County, um, we're reckoning, recommending an abatement on that one.
Motion to approve.
Second, with a question.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, don't you have to get a permit to move your mobile home, and, so they got no permit?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Why would I forgive their taxes?
They were paid in another county.
So what?
We, we verified that, so.
Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
No.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries, four to one. Alright, parcel four-two-nine-seven-five.
Yep, Direct Line Incorporated, twenty-eighteen property taxing amount of two thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents, twenty-nineteen property taxing amount of two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and forty-two cents, and twenty-twenty property taxing amount of three thousand six dollars and four cents. This is a, uh, religious property that failed to make application, um, after they had acquired the property, um, and as such, as they do meet the requirements and finally had made application, finally realized that they should have been, um, we're recommending an abatement on those guys as well.
Motion to approve.
Second. Call the roll.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Parcel five-one-eight-eight-nine.
Yep, City of Sioux Falls has purchased property, and we're recommending an abatement for the twenty-twenty property taxing amount of one thousand one dollars and nine cents.
Okay, so we have about six of these, and they're all for the City of Sioux Falls.
But they're all different parcel numbers.
Okay, so, look for a motion in a second.
Move to approve parcel five-one-eight-eight-nine.
Second.
Call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, look for a motion to approve five-three-six-two-eight.
My motion.
Yep, City of Sioux Falls, twenty-twenty property taxing amount of one thousand three hundred and four dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Ben, Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, we have parcel three-three-two-nine-oh, twenty-twenty property taxes, the amount of tw- ten-twelve-fifty, thousand and twelve dollars and fifty cents, look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, parcel five-two-eight-five-eight, twenty-twenty property taxes for the City of Sioux Falls in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and eleven cents, look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, call the roll.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, parcel eight-six-four-three-oh, City of Sioux Falls, twenty-twenty property taxes, one dollar and fourteen cents, look for a motion.
Motion to approve, wondering if it's cost us more to do the paperwork than it does to pay the bill, sorry. That was motion.
Second.
Uh, call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries, parcel three-seven-three-nine-six, City of Sioux Falls, twenty-twenty property taxes, four thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents, look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, we have parcel seven-four-seven-three-seven, Chris.
Yep, this, the last one is a veteran's exemption for the twenty-twenty property taxing amount of three thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents, again, as a veteran is permanently and totally disabled, um, service connected and verified through the VA, then they're authorized up to the a hundred and fifty thousand dollar property tax exemption, um, based on that, we are recommending an abatement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, if it's permanent and total, they'll never come back and, yep, so, okay, taken off. How do we know when, you know, is the property have to be transferred, or, you know, if this person passes away, yeah, I mean, the spouse gets it?
Yep.
So it's only when the property transfers.
Pretty much, or, as long as the spouse, uh, it'll transition directly over to a spouse, if, if the veteran man or woman passes away, it'll transfer to them, as long as they remain unremarried and stay in that property. Um, there is some other, other avenues with that, if they were to move to another property, then there's another letter the VA gives them that they are in the, uh, dependent indemnity clause, once they're granted the, into that program, then they're still, can continue on with that veteran's exemption. Um, VA's really good, and our reps out there are really good, whenever we have any questions, we call them, and I've actually spoken with them on two of them this week, so, they're really good about verifying for us.
Thank you, Chris, call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, notice requests, there are none, planning and zoning notices, there are none, petition for compromise of lien, there are none, we are now at the moment for a, an opportunity for public comment, anybody here for public comment? Good morning, welcome, if you could give us your name and address, I believe?
My name is Sarah Coob, I live at forty-five oh-nine South Tennis Lane, number three in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, five-seven-one oh-six, and I'm mainly here to address you guys because, coming up here in July, medicinal marijuana will be legal in the state of South Dakota, and I'd like, uh, my county to put some bare bones in if they can, or to help give some direction on how that's going to be set up. Um, it sounds like we're still waiting for the Supreme Court to tell us if recreational is coming, and that if recreational is passed, that this will change the medicinal marijuana law that they currently are putting together, and I was wondering if we could get something set up to where we would make sure that continuation of care is happening from July till October, when they're saying that that should be rec- rectified, and we'll have an understanding of what the bones of the law will be. I have a copy of the law, our nice city council gave me a copy of it, uh, it can change, like I said, with the Supreme Court ruling, uh, but I would like to see if we can get something set up, and with your guys' help, I think we can, so, thank you.
Thank you, and if you stick around for, um, item number twelve, we will be discussing initiated measure twenty-six.
Awesome, I look forward to hearing your guys', your guys' ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else here for public comment? Alrighty, moving on to our regular.
Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Austin Carlson, I was here back in January to discuss about the wind turbines, but.
All a.
Address, yeah, my address is four-eight, uh, seven-six-three, two-fifty-sixth Street, Garrettson, South Dakota, and, uh, once again, I, I'm well aware that this project, the wallai wind, uh, forty wind turbines that are being proposed just east into Minnesota, directly along the South Dakota-Minnesota border, I'm well aware that, that it's out of our jur- jurisdiction, and, you know, it's not in our state, it's not in our county, but the one thing I just want to make known is, um, there are real concerns for Minnehaha County and the residents in our community, uh, extending from Garrettson down to Valley Springs, I personally know of four, um, households that are actually looking at different properties, um, they're, if this goes through, they're moving. I know of one particular person who spent twenty years in Sioux Falls, they worked their life to acquire a property, you know, out of the city limits, very peaceful neighborhood, um, they're very isolated, that's what they want, and they have actually put all building plans on hold, and this is a person that has worked their entire life, and has made plans to build this house, and it is completely on hold because of this. So this, this is very impactful for me, just because I really love my community, I love the Valley Springs community, uh, the Garrettson community, they're just very good people, honest people, hard workers, um, and I don't want our school to be shut down, you know, from people moving and things like that, so, I guess I'm just, you know, we're just regular people, reasonable people, I feel, uh, the concern for us is, you know, property values are going to be impacted, and when you look at, sorry, I can be in front of the microphone, but, when you look at, like, a, a toy tractor, a matchbox car, like a one-sixty-four scale, uh, model, when you scale down these turbines, um, the tip of the turbine blade is taller than the ceiling, so, this is, this is not like a small, uh, tower that's going up directly next to people's ho- homes, um, so yeah, that, that's just the real concern, there's a, there's people, the, the South Dakota folks have been just very frustrated because we've been out of this conversation completely, and, we would just like a little bit of support of, uh, writing a public comment, if you feel inclined, so that, that's our only way that we can be in, engaged in the process, is submitting comments, and I have, uh, this is the final round of comments, due unfortunately Thursday, um, I tried coming to the meeting last week, 'cause the, the website says that it's every Tuesday, but it's by week.
Apologize for that, we haven't updated the website.
That's okay, so, I, I have information, you know, for the, excuse me, for the public or yourselves, um, if you feel inclined, we'd really, really appreciate it.
That's quite the perspective, when you put a tractor on the floor and you say the tips of the blades will be reaching the ceiling, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I had to check my math a few times, it's, it's over nine feet when you scale it down, one-sixty-four scale, I mean, it's, it's not a small, it will, for me, you know, also in the Garrettson community, we, we have Palisades State Park, you know, there's over a hundred and fifty thousand people that went to that park last year alone, you know, you get up on top of that park, you can see everything to the east, you, you know, it does take away from the natural beauty of, that people travel to Garrettson for, um, there, oh, one last thing about it, um, e- even in, uh, within the project, they have put like a six-mile setback from the Blue Mound State Park near Laverne, however, the Palisades State Park, first off, was never notified, secondly, uh, we are looking at under four miles from our state park, and then, also down in Valley Springs, you know, they're gonna have two turbines under two miles, um, you know, of their ball field and things like that, so for whatever it's worth, it's, I'm just trying to get the word out, and I'm not, the last thing I wanna do is create animosity between my neighbors in Minnesota, but, I know we've, I can personally say, this, I accidentally heard about this, just because I saw digging, you know, they're doing test holes on the state line, and I personally asked, and that is the only reason why I know, and that is the only reason why my neighbors know, because I've started calling and said, hey, are you guys aware of this? And, Minnesota really, you know, their schools are going to be incentivized, their town is incentivized for this, um, but I really think it comes at the expense of the South Dakota folks by placing them that close to our border, you know, we're all on the map for, uh, negative sound impact, and, you know, we'll, we'll be definitely in the sound zone, many households will, um, the shadow flicker, uh, not to mention those who like to run and walk, I mean, we have a, we have like six neighbors that, they're constantly running and walking up and down the state line, and, so, sorry to take up so much time, but.
We appreciate you, that you're looking out for your neighborhood and the people out there, um, but, just wish there was more we could do, I'm personally in your, in your park, I, I think wind, windmills are a blight on the landscape, and they're not a, an object of beauty to look at, so, I'm, I'm with you, but, I'm just one voice, just like yours, but.
Yep.
Keep shouting, so.
Yeah, and I, I got the information, if you feel inclined, even submit a comment, that's, that's very helpful at this point in time.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you, and I've got.
You bet. Don't forget your tractor, Commissioner Barth.
I want to say that, uh, Mr. Carlson is doing exactly the right thing, uh, to bring this to people's attention, I may not be in agreement with him, but, he is doing, uh, the right thing by, uh, speaking calmly and, uh, coming to meetings like this and expressing himself, I do appreciate it.
I appreciate that, thanks, Joe.
Alrighty. Any other public input? That was about six months' worth, right there, in about ten minutes, so we don't get a lot of public input.
Constructive public input.
Yeah, very good, yes. Moving on to regular business, we have a public hearing and second reading on the Cedar Ridge Plan Development Amendment twenty-one oh-one, Mr. Anderson, good morning.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, County Planning Director, and, uh, today is an advertised hearing, a second reading and possible final adoption of a Plan Development Amendment request, um, which, uh, the request is for the Cedar Ridge Plan Development, which is north of Sioux Falls, about a mile and a half north of Renner, this plan development currently allows for twenty-four residential home sites and an equestrian center, this hearing, or there was a, a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission on March twenty-second, uh, twenty-twenty-one, and the Planning Commission voted to deny the request, five to one, to add two additional single-family residential lots to SubArea A, and the hearing today is for the same request, to add two additional lots to the SubArea A, which is the residential component of this plan development, uh, so, I can show you a couple slides that I have, that will better depict where the, uh, prop- or the, uh, property owner Brad Wagner would like to, uh, have the two new lots, um, so this is the plan development, shown in red, um, you can see that there is already a number of lots that have, have been plotted, there's a, a number of homes that have already been constructed, I think there's about twelve, fourteen homes that have been constructed already within this development, the petitioner also lives there, in the center of this development is the Equestrian Writing Center, uh, that's just a, sort of an update of how this plan development is laid out. So, this is, this is the, um, the current layout of the property, you can see, um, originally, the, uh, last year, there was an amendment, uh, to add some additional lots, the applicant at that time had indicated that the hashed area was going to be one lot that was going to be sold to one individual, and, um, since that time, uh, he, the petitioner, Mr. Wagner, has indicated that, uh, he would like to subdivide this now into three lots, so, hence, we're going from one to three, which is the additional two lots, 'cause there is already approval for one lot there. These are the subareas, you know, they basically show the, the, uh, the ag areas and the residential, or the pa- the, the SubArea A, B, and C, which are the, uh, which are the, the uses, which is the residential and the stable component, this is how it was originally laid out, that, this was the previous site plan in two thousand sixteen, and then this was how it was amended last year, you can see they added several more lots, and now this is the request for this year, I think that sort of shows how this has, um, developed over time, so, um, you know, basically I have some pictures, uh, it just is, right now, that property's all vacant, so we're just basically looking at pasture land, so there's nothing really significant to look at, um, this shows the stable, this is, I'm looking back towards Highway one fifteen from the proposed site, um, this is the, this is looking north towards the Peterson Mobile Home Park, which is undergoing a development change, the, the Wagner's, um, garage, and this is the, looking, uh, north, this is looking at the six acres that would be developed into three home sites instead of one, again, the same thing, this shows the roads, uh, looking north on, uh, Pony Meadow Court, these are some of the homes that have been constructed, this is, you know, as you look at the, you can see Highway one fifteen, it's sort of the, as it drops over the, to the, and, at the end of these houses. I'll take you back to the, uh, site plan, uh, that concludes the slideshow that I've presented for you, uh, this is the request that the applicant is now, has brought forth, and today is a public hearing, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, and I know the applicant is here along with, uh, his engineer.
Questions for Scott. Commissioner Heiburger.
We, we've listened to this a couple different times over the past years, I'm wondering where we're at with the conditions, um, that we set up the first time, as far as this development, I mean, are we, are we in compliance with all the conditions we set on this place?
Yes, um, last year, you added a condition that, that looped road was supposed to be done by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two, that gives them basically another year and a half, they have submitted, uh, Brad Wagner has worked with his lending institution, and they have submitted a letter of credit, basically, uh, a surety bond in, in insuring the construction of that looped road, they, uh, the applicant has graded it out, I mean, there's still some final work that needs to be done on the road, but they're progressing on that road.
Mr. Sherman?
Commissioner Barth.
Being on the Planning Commission, I'm aware that the Peterson Trailer Park immediately north here is doing different stuff, Scott, how many, uh, buildings do they expect to have in that, uh?
So, um, that, the applicant to the north of Peter, which used to be the Peterson Mobile Home Park, has submitted a preliminary plan, which will be going to the Planning Commission, uh, next Monday, they have, um, I believe, fifty-seven or fifty-eight acres in that development, and they are redeveloping it from a mobile home park to, basically, as, they will be selling off lots and doing stick-built homes, they'll have forty lots there, that property is zoned rural residential, so it, the zoning is already in place for that kind of, uh, residential development to occur.
If I may, so how many, uh, mobile homes are there now that are coming out?
Well, I don't have an exact number, I was out there a couple weeks ago to take pictures for the Planning Commission, I noticed several, many mobile homes that have now been removed, there are still some that are there, I know they're in the process, um...
I hope they paid their permit to move them.
I hope so, too. The, 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 and I know we're sort of, uh, looking, now we're sort of into, looking at a different development, but they're looking, the mobile, the, the Peterson subdivision is gonna be, uh, developed in, I think, three phases, they're also having to go through major subdivision improvement revisions, where they are going to have to pave their roads and do some, some road improvements to bring it up to our county standards for, uh, ditches and drainage and some other issues.
My question, Scott, is, um, public comment on the, the change here, adding the two lots, have you heard yea, nay, I mean, from the people that live out there, or from other people in the neighborhood?
I've heard nothing.
Heard nothing? Okay, thank you. Um, this is a public hearing, so we have the Planning Commission, I'd like to hear from proponents of the change, so, do we have proponents here? Mr. Willison.
Morning Commissioners, Eric Willison, Willison Land Engineering, uh, as Scott indicated, I'm the petitioner here, have represented the Wagner's on this property for, uh, the last four, five years, um, I hope Scott and, and the rest of you would agree that the Wagner's have, have done exactly what they said they would do on this property, um, they've complied with all of the requirements of the Plan Development District, um, unfortunately, the, the plan for that lot, uh, was to be sold to a, a single individual, that deal fell through, well, on the rest of them, um, they've had nothing but success, uh, I think, and Scott can, or, uh, Brad can maybe back me up on this, but I think, uh, all but one of the lots are already spoken for, or sold, um, I guess I'm a little puzzled that converting this one lot into three lots, that turns the development from, I think, twenty-three to twenty-five, um, doesn't seem like an incredible... the development from, I think, 23 to 25, doesn't seem like an incredibly sticky situation that's really going to cause a huge concern. I didn't really get any, I guess I haven't been convinced that somehow this is going to hamper this development or somehow cause a problem on the highway. So I'm a little puzzled as to why there's been the opposition. Like I said, the neighborhood totally in favor of this. They all know and have been advised what's going on. So I guess, and the Planning Commission really couldn't come up with a, to me, a legitimate reason why you wouldn't change this from one lot to three lots. And I guess I would ask that you support it and be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Wagner's also here today, so.
Mr. Wagner, would you like to speak? Okay, you may if you want, but if you don't want to, that's fine. Okay?
Yeah, Brad Wagner, 47534 Cedar Ridge Place. I just wanted to let you guys know that after our meeting last year, we constructed the rest of that road. So I had it roughed in, and they did a great job. It looks really good. And we just thought with the housing shortage, instead of selling a large lot to one person who I don't know maybe and don't know how they'd care for their property, the guy that was interested in it, I know how he cares for his property, and he does a great job. So I thought it'd be a little more fitting for our neighborhood to have three instead of one. So I hope you support it.
Commissioners.
Want to have the opponent speak?
Yep. One second, Scott. Any here if you're in opposition to this rezone? Okay, not seeing anybody. Mr. Anderson, would you like to comment?
I would like to comment because I have tried to make this clear to the applicant and to the engineer. I wouldn't classify this as a huge deal. It is a matter of consistency. This development, just a short time ago, this was the plan, and then last year, this was the plan. And I have indicated to Mr. Wagner that I have many other plan developments that I work with, too. And my concern is, we could see a continuing erosion and nibbling away of land. I am just looking at the, from a perspective, looking at this from a perspective of consistency and originally submitting a plan that would be followed. And two more lots is not going to undermine this development. It's not going to unravel the neighborhood or the character. But what, what is the, what is the precedent that we're setting is, every time they want to develop more lots, it's going to be difficult to say no. So in five years, if they decide that SubArea B now is not economically feasible to operate a, a stable, is that going to be the next request, that we subdivide all that into residential lots? And then what about, you know, further north? And so I'm not opposed to this as adding two lots. My, my concern, and I think the Planning Commission's concern is, was consistency of following a plan and setting a precedent for potential, you know, unbridled residential development of the rest of the property. And then that does potentially change the character and the nature of the plan. And from that perspective, that's what our concern, that's what my concern was as a planning, for a planning professional. So I'd be glad, and that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Scott. Turn it over to the Commission for discussion, consideration, comments. Yes, sir.
As you know, I was the lone supporter of this in our planning and zoning. And a couple things I would say is, you know, we learn things as we go, and Mr. Wagner doesn't have a last name of Van Beskirk or Lloyd. So this is like his only development in the area. And as we go forward, we learn new things. As the High Commissioner of India said to Mahatma Gandhi, "How come you asked me for something last week and this week you asked me for something different?" And Gandhi said, "Well, I learned something since last week." And I think that would be true for Mr. Wagner. And so I would encourage us to think favorably about this and, and see if the, the whole county is changing in its character. The Peterson Trailer Park is not a trailer park anymore. It's going to be residential. And I think, you know, if anyone's ever been to the Peterson Trailer Park, more people live in that trailer park than live in Sherman. They're not a municipality, but they, they're a community. Anyway.
Other comments. Commissioner Bender.
I totally understand where planning and zoning is coming from, and it is frustrating. I feel like I haven't been on the Commission that often, and I've heard this now the third time, that this particular development has been in front of us. And, and so I do understand the issue about consistency. I understand, and honestly, sitting here right now, maybe I'll learn something tomorrow, but sitting here right now, I would not support further changes to this. But I am going to support this change today, primarily because nobody in the community has expressed any concern about it. And that speaks, speaks volumes to me. So I will be in support of this today.
Ms. Iberger.
I'm going to support it, too. I think if you, Mr. Wagner remembers, I was not very happy last time he brought it back, and, and I, I can't remember if I supported it last time or not. I mean, obviously, every lot is, 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 is giving somebody a chunk of change, and boy, it's a good thing. But I think that two lots is not a big deal. I do understand where Scott's coming from, because that's a lot of times where I'm at, too. I hope you never come back and ask us for any more lots. I hope that you leave the rest of this the way it is. They've taken out a road, I believe, that the, the access to the gravel road's been taken out, and I, I will support it today. But I hope this is it.
Ms. Benninger.
I wish 40 years ago I'd have bought more land rather than put money in my IRA. Literally, I have no problem with it. I frankly see no change in the zoning. The area is going to be developed totally different than it was a few years ago. I understand the fact that sometimes deals fall through, but flexibility and growth, you can't totally stop growth without having a negative effect on investment issues for all of us benefiting, because these property tax values will continue to support us. And I think we have to be flexible with that, so I will be supporting it.
My comment would be that I very much and sincerely appreciate the work of our Planning Commission and our Planning Office, Planning and Zoning Office. It, you are put in a situation, I don't necessarily always agree. I think it's up to bodies like this that are elected that talk, you know, are accountable and responsible back to the people. So that's why we're here, and that's why we get to do what we do. But again, just to recognize that even though we're going to go against maybe what the Planning Commission recommended, that in no way, you know, doesn't mean we don't support what they do and all the heavy lifting that they do on so many of the different issues. So I am also supportive of the change. I will look for a motion. A move for approval. Benninger.
Hi, Berger.
I'm going to motion in a second. Do I need to do a roll call vote on this?
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Hi, Berger. Hi. Bar?
Hi.
Bender?
Hi.
Benninger?
Hi.
Karski?
Hi, motion carries. Hope we don't have to see you again. All right. We'll now go, move on to a briefing on the Board of Mental Illness. Tom Wehrheim. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Tom Wehrheim, Co-Chair of the Board of Mental Illness. Erin Johnson, my co-chair, is not here today, as she is out on maternity leave. So over the past few weeks, we've had an additional co-chair step in and, and help out. Megan Bush, and she's done an admirable job here, filling in for myself and Erin when we've needed her. I took over in this position with Erin in August of 2019, and we have not had really what's called a normal day since then, because within 10 days of us taking over, the tornado hit of air behavioral health. And so we had to make a lot of changes then already, and then, of course, now we have all these COVID issues, and we've had to make changes again. But we've been pretty adaptable through the whole time. Our main thing, you know, we've, we've started shifting our, our board hearings over Zoom over the past year, because a lot of our board members are over the age of 60. We don't want to put anybody at risk. Typically, our hearings also happen in a small conference room. It just wasn't a safe place to be. So we, we, we switched to that, and the same with our QMHP, our Qualified Mental Health Professionals. They began seeing everybody over telehealth. That was an adjustment for them. And we're still doing that here today in accordance with the CDC guidelines. They've been doing a great job. We're going to leave it up to them on how they're going to proceed, when they're going to get back in person with meeting with people. There's things they can't see. You know, if a person is, is, has cut their wrist, for instance, they can't see that over the iPad, but they can review medical records and obtain that information. So procedurally, the changes we've made, we've just switched to something as simple as using a form instead of an index card. The previous board chairs were using an index card, which is difficult to scan, so we've done something like that. So then it's a sheet feed scanner. As far as the budgetary things we've seen in the last, last year, we've had an increase in costs for our QMHPs. We had a two-step increase over the past about a year and a half to get them in line with where they needed to be. It had been about 10 years since they'd seen an increase, and we want to keep them around. They're very good at what they do. They work long hours. It's not, it's not out of the ordinary for them to work a 12 to 14-hour day on a Saturday sometimes with the volume we have. Our mental health investigators are also receiving a yearly increase, which is now being paid out. Their role, and they're usually a deputy, they do this in their off time, their job is to compile the initial petition, take that first phone call for us, and then they, we have a text thread. And so everyone's on board knowing what, who's on a hold and when their, their hold expires. So we don't miss anybody. That goes out to the QMHPs, that goes out to the co-chairs, and that goes out to the other deputies, the mental health investigators on call, so we all know this person's here and they need to be seen by 12:45. They also make a determination for the county of residence for us. It's always an issue when we have a transient person, whether they're Minnehaw County or whether they're from out of state, or what the situation might be there. So they can usually make that determination. Couple of the changes we're looking to make, we're in discussions with Lincoln County to combine some documents for electronic files and to have a database. We, we always have issues as far as when a first person first comes in, what, what county of residence they are, because behavioral health is in Lincoln County. So if they're, it's always where they are evaluated by our Qualified Mental Health Professionals. So if they're at behavioral health and they have a, and they're transient, a lot of times it becomes a Minnehaw County case. Our, our biggest issue is always our volume. We're never, we're likely to not see a decrease in mental health holds. It's going to go up as our population goes up, unfortunately. So, you know, we're keeping an eye on that, especially coming out of, you know, the COVID experience here. What's going to happen to people? How severe are these holds going to be? So we're kind of keeping an eye on our numbers. We had quite an increase in March and April, and so we're watching that. We average typically about five and a half holds per day, so between 160 and 170 per month. March, we had 203. April, we had 189. And so we're, over the past two weeks, we've kind of gotten back down to that five and a half a day, and we're keeping an eye on that through the month of May to see if we can't get back, you know, if we don't taper off and get back down to that, to that five and a half, that 160 to 170 a day. But, you know, 200 holds per month, you can see what that's going to do to our budget if that, if that happens. So, so again, we're, we're watching that closely and, and seeing what changes we might need to make if, if we do need to make changes. Some of the things we've thought about is bringing on a third QMHP full-time to have help out, to reduce that caseload and those long hours for those other QMHPs. Erin and I and Megan are going to work together a little bit more to try and, you know, kind of split a caseload a bit, to not have, again, such a high volume for each of us individually, so no one, no one suffers from any burnout as well. So just some things we're keeping an eye on. We have been told that March and April are busiest months, too. So again, if we see a, a decrease here in May, hopefully then we can kind of figure out what we can count on going forward. So open up to any questions.
Questions. My question, I see you're requesting an additional $4 an hour in 2022?
Yeah, we didn't, for that, and that was the co-chair increase, and we have not had an increase, and we're below the, the appointed counsel rate as an attorney in the county. The appointed rate is $99, and so we just want to get our, our pay in line with that.
So it'll go to 103?
Well, we have to, we have to do a resolution for that yet, but.
But that's.
You're asking for it to go to 99, not to go to 103?
Right, yeah, from 95 to 99.
Okay, okay.
It's, I think when Jim was on, it got raised to 95, and since then, Erin and I have just worked at that rate, so.
Okay, okay. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just would say I'm in support of increasing that, that stipend. And it seems to me, I've read somewhere, that psychiatry is the lowest-paid medical specialty.
Well, this is not an action item. This is a briefing, and I'm sure we'll see the request as part of our budget hearings. That'll be starting here in a few weeks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Have a good day, guys.
All righty. We are going on to a briefing to consider direction for possible draft ordinance regarding initiated Measure 26, Medical Marijuana. Mr. Boge.
Commissioners, my name's Eric Boge. I'm a Deputy State Attorney with, and here to have a conversation with all you. I try, as I've expressed to you all before, try very hard not to become the sixth member of the Commission, so I'm not here to try to push you one direction or another, but to answer questions and to prompt you, in that sense, to make a decision as to what direction you wish to go with the initiated Measure 26. That will become effective in state law on July 1st. Without action, there will be some uncertainty as to what will be the process, licensing process, or, or lack thereof, in Minnehaw County. There's been some effort from a collection of, of different agencies that have promoted or suggested that one track that you could examine or adopt would be a moratorium, simply saying that we are going to be adopting a licensing and regulation mechanism in this county, but we're not going to do that right now. And the reason for that is that part of IM 26 says that the state is supposed to promulgate rules and have that done later than October 29th of this year. So part of IM 26 says that the local governments can issue or require a local license. They can put time, place, and manner restrictions on those, as well as a numerical limit on how many licenses that you wish to issue. But once you make that decision at a local level, and, and I'm thinking down the road when the state is complete with their rules, then that, that same application has to go to peer for their final approval. So this is very similar to the alcohol licensing system, where you have an opportunity to make decisions as to number, time, place, time, place, and manner, and then that final issuance of license in that situation is also at the state level. So there is a local issuance and a state issuance. So very similar on, on many levels to that, but you could also adopt a full, comprehensive, both zoning, planning, and licensing mechanism as to time, place, and manner for these types of licenses. To get that done before July 1st would be very difficult. I'll just be real honest with you. We're, we're very short on time. I'd be remiss if I didn't also enumerate that one of the options is to just do nothing. I don't know that, as a legal advisor, that I would recommend that as an option, simply because, again, of the uncertainty that that creates for Minnehaw County, the joint jurisdictional area with the city of Sioux Falls and, and with Del Rapids. I, I know that Scott Anderson and his office are phenomenal resources, and we have had some discussion with staff at the city level, the joint board level, and in our office, but no decisions obviously are made, because that's your folks' decision and, and call.
Commissioner Bender.
So what we're talking about is the economic side of medical marijuana, the licensing, who can sell medical marijuana. Can you help people understand, because I think there's some misunderstanding in the public, about whether we take action or not, if somebody is in possession... If somebody is in possession of marijuana after the law becomes effective on January 1st, how will they be treated for purposes of whether they are legally in possession of marijuana for medicinal purposes?
Very good question. And for most respects, when the law becomes effective July 1st, that the possession of medical marijuana or marijuana with an argument or presumption that it is for medical purposes will make that possession legal. In the final mechanism, they're supposed to request a medical marijuana card. There'll be an application, which is, again, part of what the state rules will enact, what that registration request will be. But once they get that card, then they will be able to carry that card and then possess what the card says they're allowed to possess. And again, there's a medical practitioner aspect of that process as well that says how much that individual will need to possess. So, the economics is certainly part of it, but there is the will of the voters that has been expressed by the adoption of IM 26. There's certainly the aspect of regulatory issues like you would view for alcohol. Just as an example, I'm not trying to paint this one way or another, probably not want an open bar right across the street from a grade school. So, the same type of thought process may go into your planning and ultimate adoption on something like this, where you would say, we would like these only to be in these types, whatever that definition you would adopt, these types of areas. And we only want sales to occur within a certain time of day, and so you could time, place, and manner as well. So, I don't know if I've quite answered your question.
Yeah, just so as a follow-up question, I mean, I think that there's some perception that we have control over whether somebody can legally possess medical marijuana after July 1st. And that, to my knowledge, is not true at all. The only thing we have some authority over is who can make money by selling medical marijuana, where they can do that, when they can do that, those kinds of things. And I am personally of the belief that we should wait until the state issues their rules, so we at least know what, you know, what rubric we're working under, so that we don't end up doing things twice, so we don't raise expectations that people can sell marijuana, have some economic investment in selling that marijuana, and then we find out the state has issued rules that, no, we can't do that. And I think that would be bad precedent for us to set. And I think we should wait until the state issues their rules and then expeditiously try to adopt an ordinance that's in conformance with the state rules when they become available.
I'm going to comment to that if I, you know, my Commissioner Bender, I've received calls from two Lincoln County commissioners. I just received an email from a city councilor. There's a lot of interest from our neighbors in government to all be on the same page. You could call it collaboration, you could call it collusion, but, you know, so that we're all thinking that, you know, we all have the same rules and that we're all playing the same way. And I think the interest is trying to form some sort of working group that is able to address these things. As Mr. Boge said, we can write all the rules we want, but until the state figures out how they're going to stamp this approved, it doesn't matter. But I do think that we should try to get somewhat ahead of the game in having that conversation with the city, with Lincoln County, with Moody County. I mean, you know, do we want to have rules that say you can't do this, or you can only do this here, and you go across the county line, and there's another place that they have a different rule? So, I think we need to start the conversation with our government bedfellows to make sure that we're wanting to do things consistently. Commissioner Barth.
You know, I have a different view of this. It's clear to me that our state government, their sole purpose on this is to delay, defer, and obstruct. And I suspect that when we get to October, they'll find a reason to defer it until 2029. And the fact that they refuse to do their job, they refuse to listen to the will of the people expressed by hundreds of thousands of voters. This passed with 70% of the vote. Our governor got less of a percent than that. None of us got anything near that. And for us to put it off, just so that we can put it off again, I think is wrong. I think that.
What do you suggest?
I suggest that either A, we pass rules, or we let everybody sell it wherever they want. I've asked planning to look into what other counties and states do. And if we refuse to do our job, if the state refuses to do their job, whose job is it? It's the job of the people.
Other comments?
If I could, just a partial response. I mean, we're certainly free, and having been a former legislator, I would not discount that viewpoint, that there has been some history that may give a reasonable person fear that peer will simply kick the can down the road again. I would point out IM 26 is very clear in what will be codified in 3420G72. It says not later than October 29th, 2021, these rules must be adopted. So, I think that would be nearly insurmountable for the legislature, given the facts that you already brought out, in addition to the law as it's stated, clearly stated, that they would be able to delay it any further than that. I wouldn't discount or disagree with you that it's unfortunate that they didn't take action already. But I think we know that there is an end date that will provide some conclusion to this.
So, if we don't do anything by October 29th, we have the rules to live by that are within the IM?
Yes, except for you'll essentially transfer the control of that issue to peer. IM 26 says that you can adopt a local ordinance and regulation as to how those licenses will be adopted, including a numerical limitation to that. But peer is also involved. So, if there is nothing locally adopted before October 29th, then everything that peer will lay out will be the only mechanism in place for that jurisdiction on how those licenses will be issued.
Okay. Commissioner Abner.
Thank you, Mr. Boge, for trying to walk the tightrope of giving us some advice or something to think about. Can you talk a little bit about a pause that doesn't put a pause? I mean, people can legally carry it as of July 1st, but puts a pause on us trying to figure out the rules until October 1st? Or, I mean, some people call it a moratorium. Can you talk a little bit about that? We're not taking away anybody's rights. It's just giving us some opportunity to talk to our neighbors, as in Lincoln County, and the municipalities in our own county, to make sure we're on the same page. Because Commissioner Kersky is right. We don't want to say one thing in Minnehaha County and then have the city of Sioux Falls say something totally different, and Del Rapids say something else, because we're going to have people running all over, and the rules are going to be different, and that doesn't make any sense either. So, can you talk a little bit about the pause part of it?
Certainly. And again, the proposal that the collective group has worked on, I think I've made some small tweaks to that, if that's the route that you wish to take, clearly says right up front, we will want those applicants to get a local or county license. So, we're acknowledging we are going to get to that point right up front. That's the very first part of this pause, and that's a very good word for it. Because we're not saying there's going to be a prohibition. In fact, IM 26 says clearly that the local governments cannot prohibit the dispensary issue. So, whether there's one or more, that's where the time, place, and manner conversation can happen. So, it will happen. The mechanisms, should that be the route that the commission wishes to take, I think reflects that by acknowledging that you will be able to get one. We're just not going to do it right now until the state finishes their rule adoption process. And again, we know by the statute that will become effective on July 1st, when that, at least the final date, will be. I hope I've answered your question.
Yes, can I have a follow-up, please? So, when the state issues their rules in October, if we take a pause, how much time do we have after October to put our Minnehaha County rules? Do we, because I feel like the chicken and the egg, it's like, how do we get ours done if we don't know what they're doing? And how can we move through that process so it's effective?
Well, I'm going to reflect a little internal mechanism on that question if I can. I tend to be a glasses-half-full person rather than half-empty. So, I'm assuming and praying, back to Commissioner Barth's point, that we're going to have a lot of knowledge going forward before October 29th, where the state's headed with this. So, they may adopt those sometime in August. We just know when the final date that they can adopt those are. But to your question, worst-case scenario, if we really don't see anything about what they're planning until it's already done, the rule adoption process itself requires preliminary notice before that. I think that process itself will give us ample notice and time to provide a local mechanism to be in place at the same time that the state rules will be effective.
Sorry, one more question. So, if we do this pause, we should get to work with our partners, and we should get to work with our own planning and zoning, who understands setbacks and everything else, and help us put together, so we'd have to get a committee together right away and get to work. So, it doesn't look like we're sitting around on our hands, because we're not.
I absolutely agree.
And I would suggest that we don't have to write a new book. We have a lot of precedence with alcohol. So, you know, again, we're going back to it. Commissioner Bender, you know, said this is the economic part of it. The criminal side, I guess, you know, your boss saying, what, after July 1st, somehow or another, I have a medical marijuana card wherever I obtained that from, or I have marijuana, and I say it's for medical purposes after July 1st. What happens?
Well, as far as the actual prosecutorial decisions are concerned, I may defer to my boss to answer that question. But I will tell you effectively that it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible. And I think there has been indication that policy will be that we will not actually be prosecuting possessions of relatively small amounts of marijuana, should there be indications of any kinds of medical issues. Now, there may be less criteria than that or more criteria. Again, I'm not the person that makes that final determination. But the law will become effective July 1st. So, that part we know for certain. And that will include provisions dealing with people from other states that have a validly issued card from their home state. So, there is that aspect in legalization of possession, to the extent that they are approved from wherever they originally come from.
Okay, Commissioner Abner.
I'm full of it today. You were in the building, and now it's my turn. So, if we do, so if we do a pause, this is considered a briefing here, how quickly do we have to have it on an agenda in order to make the publication notifications and all that kind of stuff? Do we have to do it today? I mean, where are we at?
I will tell you, no, that, again, very good question. I don't think you can act today, other than to tell me what you intend to want to do. In, let's just say, if the jail had an ordinance, for example, that they wanted, they would probably promulgate that with some past work and involvement, and then they would present that to you for asking you to set a hearing for first reading. Given the delicate nature of this particular topic and some ethical obligations that I have to follow, I'm trying really hard not to cross that line. So, in this case, we're having a conversation or a dialogue today. Should you reach some direction and conclusion to tell me which direction you wish to go, then we will need to notice a hearing, because the provision in state law that we're going to operate under requires at least 10 days' published notice of that first reading and a public hearing, which would happen on the same date. Now, right now, I anticipate that that first hearing may be June 9th. Now, you're flexible to set that date with a special meeting a little bit, one way or the other, but not too much earlier than that, because, again, we have to give notice by publication. And given all the different papers that the county uses for publication, we're somewhat constrained on how much earlier than that that we can go. Because as I understand it, the material that needs to go to the papers will need to be there no later than 10 a.m. on Thursday this week. And then going to the paper for the following week, with Friday being the last of the papers to publish, that then kicks our 10-day clock into effect. Following that, then, it would be roughly, again, June 15th, which would be a regular scheduled meeting for second reading and final adoption. Then we would, again, have to, before that ordinance becomes effective, again, send it out for publication. So, again, it would be a little bit further out. But right now, I anticipate that the ordinance would be effective June 25th, which gets us right under the wire of a July 1st effective date for IM 26. Did I answer all the questions? I'm not sure.
I think so. We can't do anything today, but so next week, is it still soon enough to?
No, because you couldn't, you have to have a 10-day notice before you have your first reading.
Have to do it today? So, we have to do it today?
No. Well, we have to request that he put the wheels in motion to make that happen.
Yes, thank you. That's a better way to phrase it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in agreement with you on that. And I, Mr. Boge, I would hope that whether we use it or not, that we should plan on something as expeditiously as possible. And again, planning and zoning has some stuff. And I know that other states clearly have some things going. And I do believe that the, there should be some restrictions on prudent use and distribution and process. But the idea of waiting until the last second and then not having enough time to make any adjustment is not my will, not my wish.
So, the fact that we have a notice of a public meeting for the first hearing, at least gives us the ability to have a document to begin with. Whether we amend it or not is up to us, or whether we accept it or approve it or reject it. But at least this gives us the ability to address the issue.
Absolutely. And I appreciate the fact that you brought that up. I would not want to muddle the waters too much more, but I would point out that, like any other ordinance, if you substantially change it after the first reading, you essentially create what could be considered a third reading requirement, because the first is no longer first. It kicks in another first and then another second. So, if you substantially change it, now, I'm saying that you would, and that's why we're having the conversation today, so I know how best to draft that to avoid that potential. But again, we're operating under the sum presumption. If that's the direction you wish to go, that we would mirror what the working groups from around the state have promulgated for a recommendation. Because, again, they can't force anything on any of the local governments. The municipalities have seen a very similar draft. Scott Anderson and I have discussed previously, and again this morning, that our view, and this is maybe a little different than the working group, that under statute, and the one case law where the statute has been mentioned, there is an acknowledgement that the county by itself can act. It does not necessarily require the planning commission on its own to act as well. Normally, I would never advocate where you have a planning issue to advocate or abdicate the planning commission out of that process. But in this case, there's a time sensitivity issue. There is, again, as all of you have mentioned, the firm wish that our decisions be somewhat cohesive with the other governmental entities. And we want to try and mirror that to that extent. Then, the Supreme Court has recognized that you can, in fact, unilaterally act on an emergency level for a limited period of time, and that's really all we're talking about here. Because we know that we, again, have an end date of October 29th, and we want to try and have something ready on or before that date.
Cohesive sounds so much better than collusion. Other comments, questions? Commissioner Bender?
I have a question, if you might, Eric, and I don't know if we can answer this now or not. But we have two forms of government, with Lincoln and Minnehaha County being the same form of government. We have the city of Sioux Falls is under a home rule form of government. So, we collaborate and pause for a second with Lincoln County to figure out exactly what might be workable. From 57th Street South and 57th Street North, we have a home rule charter. Can that be overridden by what we do as a practical matter?
Well, certainly, the city of Sioux Falls is, their governmental entity and structure can control what happens within the city limits. The joint jurisdictional areas where the city and the county work together, and outside of that joint jurisdictional aspect, and that's true with Del Rapids as well as City of Sioux Falls, the county then controls. I think in this case, the indications are from staff from all of those different entities, is that the pause is the appropriate method right now. Again, a recognition that we are required to adopt something, or we understand it's going to be legal and effective at some point very soon, relatively speaking, so that we understand that that's going to happen. But to the extent that any one of those governmental entities can do something different, they certainly can, but they're going to still be operating under the framework that IM 26 has laid out. Which still requires the state to adopt administrative rules, and they haven't done that yet. So, really, I don't know that any entity can be licensed on. So really, I don't know that any entity can be licensed on July 1st with the way IM 26 is set up. The problem will be, as I mentioned, is the uncertainty or the problems that will be created because of no action having been taken either by the state or by the local governmental entities. And that's why the pause seems to be an appropriate response until the clarity is there and hopefully we'll have the clarity sooner than later.
Mr. Schreiber.
Again, sorry. This might not be, just thinking going forward, I don't know what the number of licenses that will be issued by the county or the municipalities or anything, but I, if we have more people wanting licenses than the actual licensors are available, there's going to have, and maybe they do this with alcohol already, but there's got to be a way to figure out who's going to actually get it. I mean, is there going to be a lottery system as to get it? I just, we don't have to answer that question unless you actually know the answer, but I've just, it's just a thought process.
Well, actually, IM 26 did somewhat address that topic. So certainly, the county could say, we're just going to do one. I think you could reasonably predict there's going to be more than one entity or group that wants to have a license. So then the question is, well, how will you decide who gets it? Is it just simply a first come, first served? Or is there going to be some criteria? So one of the portions of IM 26 does talk about, if a local government has enacted a numerical limit on the number of medical cannabis establishments in locality and a greater number of applicants seek registration, the department shall solicit and consider input from the local government as to its preference for registration.
Thank you.
So you can adopt as part of your mechanism somewhere down the road that you finalize. It's later this year. Here are the criteria that we think are most important. And so those applicants that meet those, you may still have multiples and then it may end up being some other mechanism the state will hand down to us. But the drafters of IM 26 at least did envision that particular scenario happening. The only way that I could foresee will see that not being an issue if you would just simply say there is no numerical limit.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so I think we should ask Mr. Bog to move forward with cobbling together a best first draft possible. We have the best legal department in the state. We have the best planning department as far as counties are concerned. You know, consulting with the city of Sioux Falls makes perfect sense to me. Lincoln County, fine. But bring something to us expeditiously so that we have something that we can chew the fat about.
I don't think anybody would argue with that. Commissioner Bender, did you have a comment?
Well, I just, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I mean, what we're directing, the state's attorney, what I think we're directing the state's attorney to do right now is to come and we'll have a public hearing about a resolution that says that we are going to pause until we get, till we get direction from the state. And in the meantime, we can be starting to work to put together what our ideas are and how this would be implemented based on our experience in implementing alcohol licenses and things. But I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and that's what we're doing.
I got to say, I don't agree with you there, Commissioner Bender. I think you're a very wise woman, but the idea of instituting a pause, I would just refer to the state motto which says, under God, the people rule. Is that the case or not? The people voted for this.
All righty. Commissioner Benega, you look like you want to say something.
Sometimes I should just shut up. I think pausing and getting information before we start printing resolutions is a good idea because frankly, I'd like to be able to sit down and present something that I believe that Lincoln County is going to support. I think that the city of Sioux Falls will support and I'm guessing that we're going to have plenty of input from Del Rapids and some other places also. But we all go, rather than flock shoot, we put together a resolution as quickly as possible. But after we have the information that we all need to review, because this is a little more complicated than I thought it was going to be when, and I'm sure the state probably figures that. And we're not waiting. We're just trying to absorb frankly, some of the legal issues that we're going to be having to discuss and maybe defend and then see what the state does by the end of October. But we'll have something in place hopefully before July 1st.
And I would.
I don't think this is anything more than listening to the people rather than, and gathering the information just as we would do on a planning and zoning issue, whether we agree with a First Amendment or that we, a resolution that we put into place or not is part of the process. And I want to make sure that we have all the information before we jump.
Commissioner Schreiber.
I don't feel like we're not doing what the taxpayers said, Commissioner Barth, because we are protecting our business owners. Because if we just throw something out July 1st and say, this is what we're doing and everything gets changed the next week or the next month by the state, then those business owners who have just invested a ton of money in what they're doing is going to have us come back and say, oop, we messed up. So I think that putting a pause on, because they can still legally use their medical marijuana as of July 1st, you just won't be able to buy it in Sioux Falls, South Dakota on July 1st. But we're going to figure this out and with the promise, that's what we're doing. We just don't want to put our business owners at risk by just throwing it to the Wild West and not having a good plan that actually fits the rules and makes it safe for everyone.
I think we're all aware of millions of dollars being locally spent to acquire property to, for this type of thing. I'm going to shut, probably close the conversation right here because to Eric's comments that once we begin this process, there is a time for public input and that's exactly why we're doing it the way we're doing it. We will be taking public input on any action we take. So we will have the opportunity to hear from the public and I'm sure over the next few weeks, because June 15th, it probably would be the soonest that this would be in front of us for, for our second reading, right?
Second reading.
For a second reading. So.
Is public going to get a chance to discuss it all?
Yes.
Yes. The public will have an opportunity and that's why we're doing it this way. Today was a discussion as to how we move this ball forward and we will be moving the ball forward. We will have an opportunity to vote on it. We will have an opportunity for public input at that meeting and before the meeting because all of us are public officials. We get emails, we get phone calls. It goes with the territory. We welcome them and we will have a lot to consider at that public meeting. So, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Moving on, for one of the first times ever, we will get a briefing from the auditor's office. Welcome, Ben.
Please remember. Thank you, Ben Kye, Auditor's Office. Yeah, I realize it's been a while since you've had a briefing from the auditor's office. So I look forward to kind of sharing some information with you. Do I have control up here? Okay. So, yeah, I thought I'd kind of just give you some highlights, you know, talk about what we do, what we did, what we plan to do next year and my lessons learned. So first, just kind of reminder of all the things the auditor's office does, right? So as I kind of have been in the office now for almost five months, realizing that, you know, we're, the auditor's office really is the business manager and the election official for the county. And as part of that, we serve as a key financial control for, for the county, right? And so we're responsible for, you know, elections, tax administration, you know, payroll, all those things. On the bottom of this slide, what I have done, after being in the seat for a few months, I needed some sort of dashboard to kind of help me appreciate all the processes and the volume. So that's what, this is kind of my monthly dashboard here, keeping track of things like, you know, the number of registered voters we have, the number of vouchers and the volume of, you know, dollar amount of vouchers we process, liens, payroll, all those, you know, things, taxes, all the stuff that we apportion, you know, just our budget, you know, debt outstanding. And then I threw in the open records request and those, this was just kind of a helpful tool for me to kind of just remind me of all the things that we're doing and how busy we really are. So what did, what have we done in the last year or so? So I think the first thing appreciated is the election that we went through in 2020. You know, we had 125,000 registered voters. Of those, 74% of 94,000 participated in the general election. And of those who did participate, about 44% voted by absentee, you know, all kind of record numbers for us. And then I put down the number of 74 precincts, just to, again, this kind of helps you appreciate the scope of the event that we have to put on. Tax administration, you know, we administer taxes for 60 different districts in Minnehaha County. As I list all the township, cities, school districts, that was a number that was surprising to me as I started to understand it. You know, we collected about $294 million in taxes last year that we apportioned to other districts. We only kept 56% of that, so about 15% of all the taxes that we collect, we keep, rest that we portion out to the school districts, townships, cities, all those entities. And then accounts payable. This is really one of the surprising ones, you know, other than payroll that we process and the 4,500 different vendors that we have, we processed over 32,000 vouchers or invoices in 2020. I think that's amazing. And, you know, I, first I thought the number is odd and then I see we're trending very much on that as I keep track of my dashboard as well. So just a tremendous effort that we have in that regard. But, you know, and then one of the things that we have changed is to kind of, kind of address some of the manualness of our process. You know, we've made a small change for our employees. We've asked them all now to accept direct deposits. So we had some employees that were still receiving manual checks. We've since transitioned them to a direct deposit and then going forward, all employees will be asked to accept direct deposits. So I think that's just a small step and that's something I'll talk on a little bit more is some of the efficiencies I hope to see us look, look to in the future. So again, capital assets, so capital asset accounting, keep track of about 250, 258 million in total assets. Records management, that's kind of what the commissioner recorder position does. We had like 110 different requests for public records, you know, so this is people who are calling in asking for, can I get a copy of all the homes that are sold in Minnehaha County over a certain period of time? We may not provide that information, but we have to receive all those requests and then portion them out to other departments. You know, we keep track of all the contracts, the bids, liquor licenses, all those type of things, you know, lots of little stuff. And then we, liens, you know, we, there's like 14,000 liens that were put on the books in 2020. Just the volume there is just incredible. And we received payments for many of those. Then, you know, we're responsible for the debt issuance. We did issue $10 million in 2020 for the highway shop rebuild. And we're working on the ground lease amendment for that. Budget, you know, the budget for this year is $113 million. So that's a big part of what we do. And then acting as the controller for the county, so being the primary accountant for the county. Then I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about personnel, which is, you know, the challenge I've had in the office. So we have 10 positions in the auditor's office plus myself. Of those, since I've started, we've had six people that have either transferred, promoted, been promoted or retired. So we have replaced those. I've listed the names here, you know, Rhonda Bennett, who's gracious enough to fill in as our commissioner recorder, another position that we've lost. So, you know, she was an external hire. We've promoted internally Sandy Kinder to our payroll. We hired Renee Voss as their accounting manager. She was, she's been an excellent hire for us so far. You know, we've got accounts payable. We hired Michael Awol. He's been doing a good job for us. And now we will have a replacement for commanding Susan Beaman. She will start on June 7th. And then we've just, yesterday, got confirmation that our commissioner recorder position has been filled with an internal position. So she'll start on June 1st. So I'm hopeful that on June, by June 7th, we'll be fully staffed and I'm excited about Just a kind of example of some of the things I did change are the auditor website that we have, just kind of add a little more graphics, I guess, to it. Thought it was just a little more helpful information than what we had in there before. And then what we are looking to do here in 2022, I guess, in 2021, yeah. So for, under elections, you know, identify election space and thank you all for your support on that. You know, we've, I think we've identified that space here in the administration building of our remodel on third floor. I think we're looking forward to that. I think it's going to be a much better space for the voters when they come in. And it'll be a more controlled process for that. I think it's going to be a better event for those people who vote here in person and for us to process all the absentees. You know, we have to complete redistricting, you know, that's a challenge, redistricting that occurs this year. Census data should have been out by now, but now it won't be out probably till the end of September at the earliest. And we have to have that all completed by December 1st so the state can do all their stuff. So we're going to have a very narrow window of time even if the data comes out by September 30. So hopefully, I think, you know, working with planning and the GIS system, that'll be easier to do, but I can see how that, you know, that process kind of can get to be very public and can slow down. And the, the big issue with redistricting is that if you don't have it done, you have January 1st is when people can start submitting their petitions for next year's election. And if they don't know where the districts are, it's hard for them to go out there and get their petition. So I think that's just going to be a challenge that we have. And then I think, you know, we have, we have a regular purge of inactive voters that will be going through. And then we will continue to invest in the election process. I think, you know, not only is our remodel here an example of that, I've got some equipment I think I'd like to look at purchasing to help the election process faster. We've got our fourth tabulating machine that we'll be using this year. I think that will help the count process. So I think that we just, going forward, we just need to look at ways that we can invest in the election process as our voters, you know, number of voters continue to increase here in the community. And then there's a couple of, going forward, we'll have some upgrade, system upgrades for tax administration, the INCODE system, which we use to track all of our tax allocations will be upgraded in 2022. Along with that, Munis, our accounting software, that will be upgraded at the end of this year. And then I've got in the transition to ACH payment. So I'm not sure if most of us appreciate that whenever we pay any of our vendors, it's all done through a physical check. And one of the things I've noticed right away is that that should be something that we should be trying to push people to an ACH payment, right? So I've just got a lot of other things going on right now, but it's one of the things I look to kind of push to our vendors is that we could pay them through an ACH. I think they would appreciate that. It reduces some of our operational costs and I think it hopefully reduce some of the risks that we have. So that's one of the things I will look to push forward. And, and then just continue to convert whatever departments we might have that are still using paper to electronic vouchers. And then other things that we continue to do, records management. I think one of the important things that Louisiana County need to look at is the records retention policy, not for just the physical records that we have to keep, that, you know, we have, our volume of record just continues to increase. But I think there's some risks there that many other counties have recognized and have adopted record retention policies to help eliminate that risk. So I think that's, that's an important item. I think that Louisiana County want to look at, and I know the state's attorney's office is considering that, but I would just encourage everybody here to kind of think about the records, adopting a records retention policy. And so, you know, bond issuance, if we need to issue some more bonds to support the highway shop and extension building, we're ready to do that. And then, you know, we're just, we're continuing to work with the. And then, you know, we're just, we're continuing to work with the technology area to see if there's better ways that we can get people, allow people to pay us, right? We have lien holders right now that the only way they can pay us is coming up to the window and, you know, either writing a check or give us a credit card if there's ways that we can get that online for them and make it easier for them. We should do that, all type of payments. And then I thought it'd be helpful just to kind of talk about some of the lessons I've learned. Most surprising thing of the job has been just the diversity of all the stuff that the Auditor's Office does. I mean, I was, I've just, every day, I learn about all these things that I didn't know that we did. It's just, it's, that makes that probably one of the hardest things about the job is just the diversity, right? You've got to wear so many different hats with elections and a business manager, all these things have, have a lot of different things going on. But that's also probably the best part about the job, right? The diversity, every day is, it changes, and that's made this job very enjoyable to me. I really have enjoyed my first five months here. It's just, you know, I've learned a tremendous amount. I know there's a lot more. I'm looking forward to the election process. I've spent some time, as you may have heard, visiting with other election officials. You know, I went down and visited in Omaha and watched them one day using their process, how they use their tabulating machines. We spent a couple hours with Pennington County and their auditor staff and just comparing our process to their process. Hopefully, we learned some stuff from there. I've talked to the election official in Fargo as well, and just kind of understanding a little bit about his process. And then just talking to everybody locally about all that stuff. So anyway, that's been very good. And then I just, I say thank you to all the commissioners. I know when you appointed me, right, that's, that was a tough, I would assume a tough decision, right? You put a lot of faith in somebody you really don't know, and hopefully, I've tried to live up to that faith that you put in me. I've tried to do a good job, but I've really enjoyed my time here, and just thank you for that. Any questions?
Thank you, Ben. Questions for Ben, Commissioner Bender.
I don't have a question, but I just want to tell you, that's one of the best presentations I've seen since I've been a commissioner. I mean, I learned a lot. It was very well done. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, I, that's almost exactly what I wanted to say, Commissioner Bender.
I'd like to thank you to it.
The auditor without drama, without disaster, it's great. And I would also say, I think we have a couple of elections going on today.
Yes, we have a school board election in Sioux Falls.
Where else is there ones going, do we know?
Is there one, another one outside? I think we had one in Brandon a little bit ago, I think last week, I'm not sure if it was Del Rapids or?
I know there was a bond issue in Garrettson that passed 178, 179, 178 by one vote.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So stuff that we don't manage directly, but try to learn from each one of those experiences as we talk to those people who have been involved. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Eber.
I was just going to say, when we did appoint you, I think you were looking for a challenge, and I think you got a challenge, and it's good, it's good to know that you're enjoying what you're doing because it's, it's been, it's been really good for us to have things happening down there. And I again told you, your presentation was excellent, so thanks.
Great.
You had a look easy.
So we're going to keep you up there because we're going to move on to our next agenda item, consider a motion to approve and accept funds from the South Dakota reinvestment payment program to be allocated to the general fund.
Yes. So in April of 2020, the Minnehaha County Commission approved participation in the South Dakota reinvestment program. That program allowed refund of sales tax paid to state of South Dakota related to some specific economic development projects. So the, the tax rebate funds, at that point, we're estimated to receive between $400,000 to $500,000, which I think is still a rough estimate. And they're connected to the completion of the Dakota Line Dairy Project located south of Humboldt. So the Auditor's Office is asking the Commission for approval to accept those funds, and these funds come without limitations. As far as we know, there's, they're just a refund of that sales tax proceeds. So yeah, just looking for us to, well, us to approve the acceptance of those funds from the state of South Dakota.
Motion to approve with a comment.
Second.
Commissioner Barth.
So the Department of Agriculture, the DNR, whatever, they put a program forward to help us who approve certain kinds of projects in the rural area. And so Planning and Zoning approved this project, and the applicant actually without our knowledge sent in the paperwork on it. And we're blessed to receive this kind of funding coming back, and hopefully, other projects will contribute also. The fact is, though, and it's been in some of the liberal blogosphere, it's been suggested that it was a bribe. Well, we didn't know this project was going to be eligible or applying for this thing when we approved it. So it's more like a reward. A bribe is before you make the decision, a reward comes when you make the right decision. So Planning and Zoning deserves some credit on this.
All righty. So we have a motion to second, and before you run off, Ben, I just personally, maybe half a million dollars coming in. When we do budget hearings beginning next month, I don't know if we've seen projections going forward, since we did the Financial Action Network, you know, how our cash, our general fund reserves are going to, or could potentially look. Can you, will you be able to, in that time, put together something that looks down five, six, seven years based on kind of trend lines and where we could expect to be?
We can do that. I think we tried to attempt to do that with our cash flow statement. We did that up from, we looked at our different sources of funds along with our cash that we had on hand and laid that against potential building projects. I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for, if you're looking for maybe just a, kind of a trend line on our property taxes and other types of revenue and where that might lead us.
And what our, primarily what our reserves could look like or may look like. It seems like they're building and we, you know, got to be prudent with how much we save as well as what we spend, so.
Okay. We'll put something like that together.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. And we just voted for the, to move the money, not for a trend line. All righty. Look for a motion to authorize the Chair to sign Amendment 1 to the South Dakota Urban Indian Health Agreement. Carol.
Carol Mueller, Commission Office, yes. A few weeks ago, you approved a contract with South Dakota Urban Indian Health for $179,000 to support the work of the MacArthur Foundation and the Social Plus Justice Challenge. There's $30,000 that needed to be assigned yet by the end of May, and that's the purpose of this, is there's additional opportunities for this relationship to do more positive things within social justice. So would ask for your approval on this amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. And now, Carol, briefing on past precedents on designating decision-making authority related to COVID.
Yes, I think this is really, given how COVID's been and everything that's happened this past week, just wanted to reiterate that a few weeks ago, you extended the, you put a date on of the end of May for the Commission Chair to have authorization if anything needs to evolve. I just said we'd bring that forward on May 18th to look at that. I think that given how things are trending right now, things are very good, and unless you give other direction, we're not doing anything.
I think that's a good direction. All righty, so that was just a briefing. Moving on to, oh, we have authorized Chair to sign a Contract Amendment 1 with JLG for Architectural Services. Craig.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. I'd just like to commend both the auditor, as well as Eric Bog, on their excellent presentations. I have incredibly enjoyed working with both of them, and you sure picked a good auditor. I really enjoyed working with Ben. So anyway, matter at hand, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. JLG serves as the county's architect for the administration and extension building projects. And while we have an initial agreement with them, there have been some additional services that have been authorized by the Commission as far as providing direction for those to take place, and there have been some new expenses here. And so the attempt with those expenses is to put our arms around them and put that in an amendment so that it could be approved by you. So there are a few charges here that will be familiar to you. There is certainly the base fee, which is a percentage of the business, of the building cost. And then there is also a fee for, it says FFNE approved back in December 2020. I like to make a distinction that this is for furniture inventory, same process as the other furniture inventory line items, but the reason why they're broken out separately is because of the dates that they were approved, being on separate dates. Then, as you worked through planning for the extension building, there were some load-bearing walls in the basement, and so there was additional engineering support that needed to be utilized to figure that out. And then there is also some additional charges for SD phase redesign. And Tegra has negotiated that fee in the end, or as the county began the project, the scope was larger in recognizing pricing from Henry Carlson coming in being much more substantive than the county had anticipated. There was some reduction of scope and rework that was designed. So that's why there's that additional fee for redesign. And certainly, Tegra, Dick Strasberg is here, our owner's rep who negotiated that fee. He could explain additional details. I know that you were briefed about this as well in the Building Committee this morning, but would ask for your approval following any questions. So approval of the contract amendment.
All right. Questions for Craig or Dick?
I think we had a chance to talk about it earlier since we had some time in our Building Committee meeting. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you very much, Craig.
Your last official action before us. You know what? I have really enjoyed working with all of you commissioners. The county is really fortunate to have such a dedicated group of commissioners. It's a unique form of government, combining the legislative and executive branches, and I have learned so much from you in the time here, and the county is very fortunate to have you, and I've learned a lot from other people here at the county. So again, really appreciate the opportunity, wish you the best moving forward in all that you do, and I would certainly love to get together for lunch at some point later with each of you.
That comes back from all of us. You've worked hard, and greater things call and you move on, so thank you. All righty, moving on to liaison reports. Any liaisons? Commissioner Barth.
Just a quick item, the Humboldt Ambulance Service bought a new ambulance, and 630 people, including myself, bought $100 tickets for a raffle, and that was certainly a chunk of change, although I think the ambulance itself was more in the 200 grand range. Anyway, that's good news.
Commissioner Eber.
This past week, we had another MacArthur Justice and Safety Implementation Team meeting. I think there was about 20 people that attended that meeting. Some of the topics we talked about was the Justice and Safety, or the Justice Involved Leaderships of Tomorrow program we have. That was one of the grant programs that was put together. They will have nine graduates out of that class. Just kind of got an update on how it was going. They said from the nine they put in there, they have all stated actively involved, and they are seeing huge progress in these adults who are working through leadership programs. They will have the opportunity to continue on after they finish their first part in the leadership group. There will be a graduation of those people coming up in July. We've got four summer events through the grant process that will be in neighborhoods, just trying to build more community connection. And so they have four events slated for that. The Community Engagement Group will be holding a conference in downtown Holiday Inn this fall. They have invited the Native American leaders from our tribes in South Dakota to come to that conference, and it's looking positively that a lot of those Native American leadership will be here at our conference. We just approved some money for Urban Institute, Urban, Urban Indian Health, and they did give an update on what the work that they're doing with Urban Indian Health, with mental health and their Generation Red Rose program. And also talked a little bit about the Community Art Grant that we have applied for, and we also have set some money aside in the grant that will be putting some of the community art in, like the Link and possibly some other buildings. And Commissioner Bender was there too, and I would offer, if you have anything to add, I just kind of had scribbled a few things during the, during the meeting.
It was a great meeting, and there's a lot of really exciting things that are going on. I think Commissioner Eber did a great job summarizing it. It was really encouraging to hear about the, kind of the initial class that is going through this leadership training and how bought in they are, how they want to serve as teachers, mentors to those coming behind them in future classes. So that was, that was, to me, really encouraging and memorable.
All right. The only thing I have, yesterday at 4:30, we had the ribbon cutting for the Link. It will be opening stores to receive clients, I guess, by the end of next week or the beginning of the week after that. So we are going from, I hate to use adjectives, but from something that wasn't very nice to taking care of the people that need the care they have at a very appropriate and well-done location. So we had a lot of people, a lot of firemen, police officers, emergency department providers all day long yesterday that were going through the facility. So it's a great place, and I think it's going to be a great addition to our community. So, all righty, new business.
Can I, can I bunch back to liaison reports? I'm sorry, I didn't get my hand up quick enough. Just a couple of things. I know we're all starting to think budget. I did have an opportunity to visit with most of my liaisons last week about budget, just as budget is interesting every year. I promise this to be interesting again this year. But I do want to thank everybody that worked hard on budgets. They were due last Friday, and I know that's a, it's a heavy lift to get that stuff in. And I also wanted to just note again that last week was Law Enforcement Appreciation Week. The sheriff hosted a lunch. There were a lot of different activities that went on last week for our law enforcement, but I had an opportunity to stop by to one of the lunches and, and just go around and thank people. And, you know, one of the gentlemen I visited with just talked about, because I, I mentioned everybody, it's been a tough year. It's a tough year for the average person with COVID and all that related to that, but then law enforcement, you add on all the, the civil unrest and, and public conversation about law enforcement. And, and they are appreciative of serving in a community where, where people do support them, they do feel that, but I don't think we can say it enough. And so I just really want to thank all the folks, particularly here in Minnehaha County in law enforcement.
Amen to that. All righty, new business, old business. The only thing I have to add for old business is next week's calendar, May 25th, we do have a 5 o'clock joint meeting. It'll probably be a record short joint meeting, but we do need to have a quorum there, so just keep that in mind. All righty. We have.
Thank you guys to be there.
We are going to adjourn because we will be coming back for executive session, so I would look for a motion to recess, I guess.
Motion to recess?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign.